We'd like to open the Planning Commission meeting. Bridget?
Yes, welcome and good evening, everyone, to December 12th meeting of the year, last meeting of the year. We're broadcasting this meeting live on Pacific Coast TV's website as well as Channel 27. Few things, a public comment etiquette to review that we do have people in person and as well on the Zoom platform. So, the Chair will open up the meeting to the general public agenda, and at that time, members are welcome to speak on items that are not listed on this evening's agenda. For those specific items that are listed on the agenda, there will be public comment opportunities during those specific items listed. Three minutes will be given to those who are commenting. In-person comments will happen first, and then will follow by the Zoom attendees. If you haven't filled out a green card, we do have green cards at the counter there for you. I don't think we had any kind of correspondence that I'm aware of, and just want to remind the Planning Commission and staff to speak into the microphone so that those folks that are on TV and recording can hear everyone. Thank you for your patience, and I now turn it over to Chair Hernandez.
Thank you, Bridget. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Riddick?
Here.
Commissioner Johannes?
Here.
Commissioner Gorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Gossett?
Here.
Chair Hernandez?
Present.
All Planning Commissioners are present this evening.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Does anybody have any, do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments on the minutes? All of us were present, so can I get a motion from one of my commissioners to approve the minutes?
I move we approve those minutes.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. FIVE-O. Okay. Next item on our agenda, I believe, is 1A.
Public comment.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I'm going to open this as Bridget indicated that we have public comment, so if any of the people present today would like to speak for an item that is not on the agenda, feel free to raise your hand. Not seeing anybody who has submitted a green card in the public, I will move to the Zoom. And we have one person who has been asked to allow to talk.
You are muted. We cannot hear anything on Zoom.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. My apologies.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate that.
Okay.
As always, our public meetings are interactive, and we appreciate participation from the public.
We also have Spanish interpretation this evening as well.
Thank you. Okay, so. We're pausing for a moment here, there's a little side conversation. Just give us a second, please.
He's on. We're good.
All right, I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move on to the first item on the agenda, which is 1A.
Thank you. Good evening, Commission and community members. I'm Jill Ikis. I'm the Community Development Director, and I'm here tonight with John Dowdy, our Assistant City Manager, and we will be presenting to you some updates about emergency coastal development permits. Your packet went out on Saturday. At that point, we were reporting out about two permits that were pending, and we wouldn't normally do that because the code is that we come to you right after or as soon after permit is issued as possible, but you're not going to be meeting again until almost a month from now in January, and both permits have projects that are in the public interest, and we just wanted to make sure that you were fully updated on both of them. One of them, I won't be speaking to unless you have questions about it, is a proposal from San Mateo County to put in some emergency repair work on the revetment of the Half Moon Bay landfill. It's a county facility located between the Poplar Beach parking lot and the Seymour Ditch. The revetment and drainage pipe both were damaged, and they've been studying and trying to figure out how to get them battened down for the winter while they continue to work on their plans for how to address the landfill as a whole. We expect to issue that permit most likely before the end of the year. The site has been posted. The public will be notified through those postings, and they will make every effort to maintain an open coastal trail during their project construction, which is one of the key things that our Coastal Commission folks want to make sure we're covering. So with that, I'm going to move on to the matter that we're going to make a presentation tonight regarding the issuance of an emergency coastal development permit for emergency housing at 880 Stone Pine Road. And our presentation order will start with John Dowdy, who is the Project Manager for the city, and he's going to present this proposed project and some next steps. And then, in my role of reviewing the permit, I will share with you how that assessment was done, and the documentation that you have backs set up in a lot more detail than what I'll present, but if you have questions about it, please let us know. We are then, of course, hoping that you can host a public comment forum. This is not a hearing, but public is more than welcome to come and comment on the item, and we'll button that up and explain next steps. So with that, I will turn it over to John.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. Nice to be here, and it's been a while since I've been at this table for you guys. So, we are here to talk about a very interesting and critical project for this community. We are looking at a project which includes roughly five acres of the 880 Stone Pine property, which was purchased in 2020 by the city of Half Moon Bay, in part to complete its work with the Corporation Yard and the remainder, exceeding the environmental constrained areas was left for consideration for future uses. Obviously, in January of last year, we had a unique and tragic event which sort of turned this community and, I think, many of our lives on its ears a bit, and really pointed out some significant challenges and issues within a particular segment of our community who are really challenged with housing. And that shooting incident really, really identified significant problems, which then have led to additional assessments beyond that point in and outside of the city limits. So, the issues are clear, imminent, and acute. What this project proposes to do is to complete 47 total manufactured homes on that five-acre parcel, 46 of which would be affordable farmworker homes. One would be for an onsite, full-time manager's unit. I anticipate that that unit will also probably be for, really isn't affordable, but we're wanting to be transparent on that and just make sure that it's clear that 46 are for affordable units, and those will be, at this point, available to farmworker homes. The first 28 are approved as part of and funded through a state grant, the Joe Serna Farmworker Grant, and those units will be ownership units, so the units themselves will be owned, purchased and owned by those residents, and the lease space cost will be at an affordable rate and pretty minimal based on a very low-income target that we're looking at for those units. The project includes site improvements, open space improvements, and individual lots, and I'll go into more detail with that, but this exhibit basically demonstrates roughly where that five-acre portion of the property is located. So, this is a unique project in many respects, and that includes the process in which this was undertaken. Obviously, this was initiated because of a unique situation, an emergency situation that necessitated us to sit down and work with our partner agencies, including San Mateo County, to try to figure out how do we address this issue. We, in this process, we developed an MOU. That MOU was approved by the Board of Supervisors as well as our city council. That MOU laid out a number of things, including how the city and the county would work through this process as co-applicants. The other piece of that is that the intention is fully that the county will ultimately purchase this property, and that parcelling will occur with the subsequent follow-up CDP process. And that will assist us in the refinancing further of our loan that now the county, as part of the MOU, also refinanced our loan for that site. So, in the end, this is a very, has great benefits to the city, both in the context of assurances and fair financing for 880 Stone Pine as a whole, but also for this project. The county is the principal funding agent for this. They have received several grants, including the Joe Serna mentioned, the CZI, the Chan Zuckerberg, and they are pursuing other grants. They also have allocated funding to this project through various funding sources that they have available to them. They will be responsible for managing, operating, and overseeing the management and operation of this site. And as noted, the county will ultimately be purchasing this five-acre site, and that purchase is anticipated to occur by the year-end 2024. Half Moon Bay, as co-applicant, is providing the site, obviously, infrastructure support. We're providing and working through various service agencies to make sure that, in the end, the households that will be living here will have access to various services, just like any other facilities that we would put in particularly affordable units. And ultimately, we have a unique issue and a unique opportunity here is having our Corporation Yard and neighbor. This project also, financially, will benefit from the fact that the Corporation Yard itself contributed many hundreds of thousands of dollars in mitigation measures as part of that project, including the Frog Corridor, the fencing and separation, the Peninsula Open Space Trust easements and all the like that comes with that, and the studies that led to that work. So, they're benefiting from that. So, our site, and it's hard because I'd love to use the pointer, but I really have to deal with that, but I don't, I won't go into great detail. I'd rather take questions than go into great detail, but I'll start from basically west to east is kind of the easiest run. This project commences at the edge of the existing terminus of Stone Pine Road, and Stone Pine Road will include continuation of sidewalk to the site and continuation of sidewalk along the access drive and connecting into the intersection where the vehicular access is provided. There's also through this, and you'll see that, there is a trail access point, and there's a reservation of a trail and access point for the Pillar Cedos Creek Trail as well. So, this has been reserved and preserved for future access should the Pillar Cedos Trail come to fruition in that area. Again, these are individual lot configurations, so each lot will have a unit, will have two parking spaces, will have an enclosure for solid waste material, refuse, and the containers. And also, one of the provisions that we all agreed to was they need some form of storage and secure area to store bicycles and things of that nature. So, every unit will have access to a small storage shed as well. This project includes open space. It includes a resident-only community garden, which is located kind of to the far easterly area there, and delineated right there, guest parking. And then, on the far west is a community park. This community park has been developed and designed around the idea of not only providing service to this neighborhood, but also to the community as a whole, and namely and notably the Cypress Cove neighborhood. So, the city will be taking some responsibility for efforts and work and maintenance ongoing with that site. I think one of the notable changes is that we heard an overwhelming lack of support for a small half-court basketball area. The basketball goal has been removed as a result of those comments. There have been many, many comments received, many, many meetings and conversations and input through this, and this project really reflects an iterative process, and that's just one simple response to an overwhelming call for concerns about noise, particularly in that adjacent area. Next. And I can come back to that if there's any questions. What was, we felt was critical to helping visualize this, as applicants, we know how important it is to see this. So, this is a simulation looking basically from the edge of Stone Pine Road, looking east toward the Corporation Yard. There you can see the first trail on that is the ultimate extension and access point that would provide access to the Pillar Cedos Creek Trail. The second pathway is an improved pathway that will occur and will provide access to the park area and also into the facility itself, the neighborhood. And then you can see that there is full sidewalk, so we also heard a lot of comments and concerns about making sure that the kids and general public were safe walking and being able to move through this area. Next. This is a little more of a view looking a little further east, which is that intersection, primarily the area, if you look to what would be my left or your left on the screen, that is a grouping of one-bedroom units. Again, we're looking at one, two, and three-bedroom. The mix will be driven by the needs of those folks who are looking to be housed. We have a mixture of households, some larger, some smaller, in the 19 households that were involved in the January 23rd incident, and then, of course, there's others that will come down the road as we look at and deal with that. So, it will be a mix, but at this point, this is the area most conducive to one-bedrooms, but there are also one-bedrooms mixed into the, I'll call the southerly side as well of the drive there. And next, and this is a view looking westerly, and you can see the community garden here, the guest parking, guest, well, bicycle parking, and looking out. I think notable in this slide is just the, sort of, the aesthetic of the units themselves. We are looking at a palette of multiple colors. We're looking at pitched roofs. We're looking at brow covers over the doorways. We're looking at wood steps and wood landing areas. We're not looking at just the standard steel kind of stairs and landing areas and things of that nature, and these units have been and are being looked at and specked out to be the top of the line. One of the concerns that I think most people in this room probably have is how will these be maintained? How long will they last? The idea is to spec these out appropriately with the right types of materials, with the right types of paint, heavy-duty, and they will be there for a very, very long time or available to the individuals down the road. And we're looking at, at this point, the way this is set up is a 20-year loan. It starts forgivable loan provisions at 10 years, so they are there for ostensibly a long, long while. Next. This is visualization of the park area, and again, in prior iterations, there might have been a basketball goal that's no longer there. So, we're looking at a combination of some green area as well as playground and some flat work areas for the kids to play, also looking at and envisioning some areas for picnic and gathering of the community in this location. Next. What we heard also from the community, particularly Cypress Cove, but others in the community of concerns about access safety and how do we make Stone Pine a better place to walk, drive, bike? And we, I will say, we had a traffic study prepared by a traffic engineering firm. That study did not conclude based on their putting out of counters and everything out there, that we did not, they did not identify a speeding problem. But, that being said, there is a perception that there is that, and there are people who do speed. We know that. I've been out there. Frankly, I'll admit, occasionally, I've forgotten how the speed should be out there that I was driving. So, but it predominantly was not a speeding issue. That being said, we acknowledge that that perception and that, and some reality needed to be addressed, and this is a plan and ultimately conditions that are attached to this project. This includes, at the westerly end, the flashing beacons and an improved crosswalk area, removing of some vegetation that blocks some of the view on the radius turn there heading toward Main Street. Feedback, speed feedback signs on an eastbound and westbound basis, completely new crosswalk at East Patrick Way. And then, I think notably on this is a restriping along the edge of the entirety of the road to create a compressed drive, driving section there to try to encourage people to slow down a bit with that. And obviously, there's also the sharrows, the share the road identifiers that will be there as well to help with the bicycles as well as the motorists to understand that there are bicycles sharing that road. So, that's included in the conditions of approval and part of the package. Next steps is that the county, upon your acknowledgement tonight, will be proceeding with finalizing their bid documents, and those bid documents will go out to the street fairly soon. If you looked at the package, you can see that the full civil drawings have been done and prepared for this project. Those will include all of the sewer water, infrastructure plans, everything, so these are almost ready to go out. Actual construction on the site will be a bit dependent upon what El Nino and what the weather just in general brings to us. We anticipate, starting early spring, if we have an exceptionally dry El Nino, then we may be able to start earlier, but I think everybody's interest is to not get out and have a mess out there, so, and we're not going to rush out to do site grading and work until it is time, but that's likely to be early spring at this point. And again, we're looking at traffic calming to be put in following the main construction of this site. The last thing we want to do is have those brand-new striping and brand-new improvements kind of mangled, destroyed, and impacted by construction traffic on that, so we'd like to do that, but that will be, those will be in prior to occupancy of any unit on this site, so it is only the construction traffic. Speaking of the construction traffic, I don't want to be remiss in not mentioning also in the conditions, there are specific provisions for timing, days, timing, parking, lay-down areas, all the things that are very tightly reflected in this, but I think even more importantly for the neighbors is signage and for requirement for reduced speed for the construction vehicles and equipment coming through there. And as normal, we will require the posting of phone numbers and names and of contact folks for anybody looking to take up a question or an issue or concern with the contractor. And again, we are in an interesting and, I think, a great situation, given that the county and the city are co-applicants and ultimately responsible for the enforcement, compliance, and insurance that the contractors will perform as they are required to do, and not, so it's a little different than a typical developer-driven, private development project.
I will turn it over to Jill.
Thank you, John, and now I'm going to dive into emergency coastal development permits and how they are provided for in the city's certified local coastal program. You'll, I will try to not cover...
Actual construction on the site will be a bit dependent upon what El Nino and what the weather just in general brings to us. We anticipate, starting early spring, if we have an exceptionally dry El Nino, then we may be able to start earlier. But I think everybody's interest is to not get out and have a mess out there. So, and we're not going to rush out to do site grading and work until it is time. But that's likely to be early spring at this point. And again, we're looking at traffic calming to be put in following the main construction of this site. The last thing we want to do is have those brand-new striping and brand-new improvements kind of mangled, destroyed, and impacted by construction traffic on that. So we'd like to do that. But that will be, those will be in prior to occupancy of any unit on this site. So it is only the construction traffic. Speaking of the construction traffic, I don't want to be remiss in not mentioning also in the conditions, there are specific provisions for timing, days, timing, parking, lay-down areas, all the things that are very tightly reflected in this. But I think even more importantly for the neighbors is signage and for requirement for reduced speed for the construction vehicles and equipment coming through there. And as normal, we will require the posting of phone numbers and, and names and of, of contact folks for anybody looking to, to take up a question or an issue or concern with the contractor. And again, we are in a, in an interesting and I think a great situation, given that the county and the city are co-applicants and ultimately responsible for the enforcement, compliance, and insurance that the contractors will perform as they are required to do and not, so it's a little different than a typical developer-driven, private development project. I will turn it over to Jill.
Thank you, John. And now I'm going to dive into emergency coastal development permits and how they are provided for in the city's certified local coastal program. You'll, I, I will try to not cover matters that John already touched upon. It's just that the, his side of the process for being really representing an applicant and my side of reviewing the permit for conformance with our plans and findings overlap quite a bit. So we'll, we'll try to keep this not too, not too in the weeds. That said, emergency coastal development permits can be granted subject to meeting three findings, and I'll go over each of these, establishing that an emergency is present, providing public comment to the extent that it can be done, and consistency with the certified local coastal program. So starting with establishing an emergency, we evaluated the, the core of it, which is the definition of an emergency. And this is in your code, and this, this comes from the, the same definition that the Coastal Commission uses. And you'll see that we parsed the key points of this apart, and will present to you that we believe that this situation, although unusual because it is housing development and that is different than most emergency activities that you, we normally report out to you, that normally would occur in the coastal zone, but that we have had a sudden, unexpected occurrence, and 19 households became immediately effectively homeless all at once. Immediate action has been required and continues to be required. The displaced households are in housing situations that are temporary, and the San Mateo County Farm Worker Housing Task Force was established after the shooting tragedy in January, and they are identifying additional significant cases of substandard and unsafe housing. And so the scope of the emergency is growing. The, it, it is understood that this population, farmworkers and their, their families are low-income, very low, maybe extremely low income, and that this is, we have chronic challenges with providing affordable housing throughout the Bay Area, of course, on the coast side. But the acuteness of it relative to this event and what we have learned since that event spur that immediate action is needed. And the action is needed because without it, we would expect significantly intensified overcrowding and/or homelessness to be a result. And homelessness is certainly a threat to life and health. So for the second finding, we really, you know, this is obviously a, a longer running up to the decision that was made to pursue an emergency coastal development permit. But the county and the city have hosted four community meetings. Two of them were specific to the Cypress Cove neighborhood, which is immediately adjacent to the proposed Stone Pine Cove community. And then two were open to the public generally. We had facilitator at one of those meetings. I know that the city manager has had one-on-one meetings with numerous individuals who have just wanted to learn more about this and express their concerns. Other staff members have been making themselves available as the public has been interested in this. A webpage was established. You can see on the right of the screen, we keep updating it. This, this is the current webpage that includes both the application materials and the approved, issued emergency coastal development permit. We have a dedicated email address, and we've been sending email notifications. The site was also posted when the application came in. Relative to the community input, I, I think John has probably touched on most of these topics, but some of the, some of the key areas, a lot of intent went into addressing the comments. So the traffic study, as John acknowledged, helped evolve into a traffic calming plan. I prepared a parking needs assessment by looking through all the information that we had from our, our own staff as well as some of our service agencies that know our 19 displaced households, so we understand their car ownership details to a very high level of accuracy. And we compared that to what's going on at Moon Ridge because we heard comments and concerns about the parking provisions at Moon Ridge and that they're not adequate. And so that is presented in the permit, and we are confident that the parking proposed on-site is, not only does it exceed what was provided at Moon Ridge, but we believe that it will really work well for this particular population. Biological resource protections are always brought up. This site has Pillar Cetus Creek, of course, and the Ag Pond. However, this commission well knows from having gone through the permitting for the Corporation Yard that the conservation corridor has essentially created the project site. And that was why this project site was included in your housing element. It's why the city council asked, asked staff to move it forward into the housing element. So those are things that we can have confirmed in follow-up permitting, but it's, it's all been in place and, and very well reviewed. Additionally to bio, we, we also had a consultant cover the site for archaeological resources that had not been looked at for the Corporation Yard portion of the project. And so that, the site has been combed for, for that as well, and it was cleared. Hazard avoidance and management was also of concern and of ours as well, of not just the public. We had staff do research and work with SFPUC regarding the Pillar Cetus Dam. The project engineer put in floodplain levels, and there's been other considerations about hazards. The site is not in a high fire hazard severity zone. Again, I repeat, it is not in such a zone. I think that's important to, to know. And then the onsite neighborhood management, you'll see in, in the permit, that we speak to community policies. This is something that San Mateo County has implemented at other, at another project site. And it's kind of like CCNRs, and it's something where a new household would need to agree to, to the policies. For example, they need to park in, in the development. They need to park in the neighborhood on their own property. And the, a whole array of topics can be covered in community policies. So along with onsite, live-in management unit at the very entrance of the neighborhood, we've, we believe that this is, these are best practices for supporting the new neighborhood residents in having a successful and comfortable neighborhood. Consistency, this is the third finding, consistency with the certified local coastal program. Just remind everyone that the land use designation for this property was updated with the recent certification of the land use plan to public facilities and institutions. That designation allows agriculture and shelters. The proposed land use of farmworker housing is actually considered to be an agricultural land use. The Coastal Commission considers farmworker housing to be an agricultural land use, and our LCP is, is clear about that. Other policies, just, I'm, I'm not going to dive into all of them, but if you've looked at the permit, you'll, you'll see that we've, we've tried to assess them. But growth management, 28 Measure D allocations have now been assigned to this project. That covers the, the number of units that the Joe Cerna funding is supporting, and that's all we had left. We didn't issue them until, we, we really didn't have any more applications for downtown allocations. The site is in that downtown area. Of course, we looked at policy consistency with environmental, visual, and coastal access. These are all resource protections that are required by the Coastal Act. And then protections against hazards, which we've already mentioned. This is something that John was bringing up in his presentation, that there are conditions of approval. This is, this is really important. Emergency coastal development permits are real permits. This is not waving the hands. This, this permit is full of your standard conditions that this commission routinely includes in permit issuance, but quite a few that are tailored very specifically to this project. Some of them, in particular, to be responsive to concerns from the adjacent neighborhood, and also our own, just wanting to make sure that the longevity and success of this neighborhood is, is set up really, really well. So this, this is not an easy permit that has been issued here. The, the conditions are, are strong and are, require all the codes to be met. For example, all of the MPDES stormwater management must be met. There's detention basins on the site, and calculations have been run, and they will be run again. Utilities will be fully up to snuff, and all the water connections, the sewer connections, electricity service will be underground. The, the project will not be served by natural gas. It will be an electric fuel project, so that aligns with city council's preference. Site access has been carefully considered, as you've heard, including emergency access, which is a condition for developing an evacuation plan. This is something that frankly needs to be done for Cypress Cove as well. Fire protection, the fire flow, which is really the pressure, water pressure for adequately being able to fight a fire, needs to be provided through a, the system that will be put in place with the correct number and location of fire hydrants. And the fire district has seen the plans, and they'll see the plans again. And there are, of course, many other topics, but I just wanted to highlight a few that are of interest, I think, to, to a lot of people. So I'm wrapping up here. Our obligation at this point with issuing an emergency coastal development permit is to make sure that it is reported promptly to the Coastal Commission, and that has been done. This was approved last night, and I've reported to them. And then we are here with you, which is why we updated your agenda packet to, to get this out there. The permit is on the website. There is a dispute resolution process regarding permit processing, and we have put that into the documentation. And we are now, at this point, of course, having this session, and we'll, we'll hopefully get some public comment, but we are queuing up to get an application in within 60 days. And that application for the follow-up coastal development permit will be handled like any other coastal development permit. It will be evaluated for coastal program consistency. It will have SEQA coverage, which is environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. It will be subject to public hearings, at least one before the planning commission. It will be open to appeals to the city council and to the California Coastal Commission. The order of the meeting, we, we don't know if folks have come to make comment, and we, we are, of course, hoping they have. We've noticed this to everyone who signed up for this project, as well as our housing element email list, as well as, of course, the planning commission's email list. This is a tricky thing, and I just, I want to note this for the good of the public. The planning commission notes this, but they, we, we need everyone to understand that the commission needs to maintain their objectivity. This is really a pending coastal development permit application that is going to come to this commission. And so in the event that, you know, they hear some comments and they're not able to specifically respond to them tonight, it's not because they don't want to, it's because it is not the right time for them to do so. We will need the commission to make a motion to acknowledge receipt of, of this report as, in particular, the, the motion regarding the landfill is not as important because you're going to be doing that once that permit's been issued. We'll bring it to you in full. And that's all we have. Thank you for your patience.
So Jill, just a point of order questions for both you and Winter, just to make sure both my fellow commissioners and those watching from home are on the same page. We can take feedback from the public, number one. So we're going to open it up for public comment in a few minutes. As a commission, can we ask clarifying questions?
You may. We, you know, hope you can keep them focused in the realm of clarifying questions and try to not put forth opinions. I'm sure you can do that.
And you're trying to avoid open discussion so that we don't sully our objectivity for the hearing that we should expect to hear before the end of March?
We have not committed to that timeline, but we appreciate your interest in getting it here that quickly. We will, we will try. The permit application is due within 60 days of yesterday.
Okay.
Okay.
So sometime later this year. Okay. I have other clarifying questions, but I'll hold. I'm going to open it up for public comment. I don't see any hands raised. I'm not aware of any green cards that have been submitted.
Just one that just raised her hand online.
Okay. I'm going to look around the room and make eye contact with everybody who's present here. I'm not seeing any of the audience wanting to step forward at this time, so we'll go online. For the second time this evening.
I guess I can speak, yes. Good evening. My name is Kirsten Lovring. I'm a resident here of Cypress Cove, immediately on Stone Pine, and immediately backing up against this new development. So first of all, thanks for removing the basketball court. That was a serious concern in terms of noise pollution, since there's a significant echo, unfortunately, in this neighborhood. So thank you for that. What I wanted to raise is what I didn't see in the trapping, traffic calming study and intentions. How are you going to address the usage, the, the usage of Stone Pine and the mixed usage between really large vehicles, construction vehicles, city vehicles, often with trailers, that are accessing the city yard? And mixing this with bikes on this road when we barely have enough room sometimes for these vehicles and regular cars? The Stone Pine residents here, or residents here in Cypress Cove along Stone Pine have been suffering for the last weeks and month from a lot of construction traffic related to PG&E and other activities. I heard you say that you want to regulate this better. We have had weeks and weeks of no sleep at times at night because the, the yard was used at all hours by large vehicles. So it would be good if that concern can be addressed in addition to what we heard earlier about the traffic calming measures, because clearly these extremely large vehicles at times do not mix on this road. And I just, and there's a concern certainly in our residents here that we will be suffering for weeks and months again with construction noise at all times of day and on weekends. for weeks and months again with construction noise at all times of day and on weekends.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public, either present in the building or online, who wish to make a comment? Not seeing any. I'm going to close public comment and move to clarifying questions for the Planning Commission. Commissioner Gorn?
Just to be clear, so clarifying questions are usually very limited. So if I have concerns about parking, or about speeding on the road, or about sort of protection of of the critters, those are not things I bring up. Is that correct?
Correct. At this time, the role of the Planning Commission is really just to receive this report. And as Jill pointed out, you will be having an agenda item in the not-too-distant future that is a full, permanent CDP for this project with all the plans. Of course, I'm sure staff would appreciate any questions you have going towards that in emails and things and meetings along the way. But at this meeting, it really just is focused on receiving the information about the emergency CDP. I got buzzed. Sorry, I went on too long.
That's a first, least in Half Moon Bay.
I'd like to also just confirm with our city attorney here that some of the topic areas that, for example, I just heard from Commissioner Gorn, we would be happy to point you to the conditions of approval, for example, that are related to topics that you're interested in. I think as long as we're not talking about it with much depth, that that's probably okay. And Winter will cut us off if we go too far. Okay.
I was I was also a little concerned, knowing that, you know, the issues raised by Cypress Cove residents, that there is nobody really from Cypress Cove here. So maybe you guys want to just outline what the outreach has been before this meeting? Because that that seems like something missing. Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, would you like us to respond as we go, or?
Yes.
Okay. I'll let Mr. Dowdy address that. Thank you.
Well, this goes back to April. We started a conversation with Cypress Cove homeowners at the Mariners Church, has proceeded, as Jill said, through three different hearings and meetings of varying degrees of community and Cypress Cove input. With regard to the specifics of this project, we noticed by posting the site, we also have indicated in our e-news that we had received the application. We were proceeding toward approval of an emergency permit. The webpage has included all of the application materials, has included now the issued permit, and it is included throughout the time that we're working through this, the traffic study, and various updates moving forward. We also used our constant contact list, which included everybody who signed up from Cypress Cove to get notice, and that was provided earlier this week. It has been provided at different times in the process. And as Jill indicated, this meeting and the activities and proposals going forward to you were also placed out into the the ether through various contact lists, including the Planning Commission contact list, including the constant contacts list for Cypress Cove, as well as for the Housing Element.
Thank you.
And Matthew can speak.
I think our city manager would like to speak. I'll open it to city manager, Mr. Chitster.
Through the chair, Matthew Chitster, city manager. I'll also just share that for the last couple of months, I've had very frequent meetings with the president of the Cypress Cove Homeowners Association, who represents, obviously, that community, but also the group of neighbors that have shared the most concerns, and provided direct updates of this process to him as well. So, you know, we feel like we've worked really hard to be transparent with that neighborhood, given their proximity to this project. Of course, it obviously doesn't mean that they're happy with everything that we're doing, but I I think they they can say that we've provided information on a timely basis and kept them aware of the process so that they could engage us as they wanted to.
Thank you. I mostly wanted to make sure that people understand sort of how much has been done here, because it does seem like kind of a glaring omission. But maybe they're all happy at this point. Thank you.
Commissioner, join us.
Yes, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the infrastructure support that the city is will provide.
Could I ask you again?
Yeah. What types of infrastructure support is the city providing?
One of the primary infrastructure support, well, I'll give you two. The city is committing and allocating for water. We will be committing both affordable housing allocations for the water connections, as well as coastal priority water connections. And those are on the priority list, and those are critical in terms of cost point, as opposed to non-priority water. So that's one way that we are contributing to this. The other is that we have a pool of capacity units for sewer from projects that are no no more, but we own the capacity rights that were purchased as part of the bonds almost 40 years ago. And those have been allocated or committed to this project as well. Those are the primary two infrastructure commitments that we've made to the effort.
I'm sorry, but I don't understand the water connection commitment. Does that mean the city has those water rights already, access to those water connections already for all the, what is it, 45, 47 units?
Your the coastal land, the coastal plant, your coastal land use plan included provisions for two different pools of priority water, priority water connections. They have not been acquired yet, but they are available to various projects. And there is, you know, a demand for those. So this was allocated, splitting those among the two allocation pools of of water connections.
Okay. And are these manufactured homes, or are these modular homes? Where are they going to be actually built?
These will be built, these are factory-built homes. Let's just, let's just make it easy from that perspective. They're factory-built. They will be brought to the site, fully manufactured.
Okay. And are they, they're not considered mobile travel trailers?
They are, these are not mobile travel trailers. These will meet, they're basically built to to uniform, what used to be uniform, UBC, Uniform Building Code standards with it. But they're built at the site. But they are rolled in, they are pulled in from that point. But these are not park models. We were clear from the very beginning in our conversations with our partner, the county. We've seen those projects that that have the park models, for example, and you see some of them around, which include a, you know, sort of a second-story loft area. We were clear that those were not acceptable. Those were not going to be long-term available. And so these are, but these are factory-built units.
Okay. And 28 of those units are going to be owned by and offered to the Joe Cerna. How the remaining, I guess it would be 18, because one is going to be for management, correct?
Correct. That still is an outstanding issue. We are looking to for additional Joe Cerna grant funding. We're waiting for another cycle. We're also, with the county, seeking philanthropic giving, as well as other governmental and and related grants. What we can say is these will be committed to affordability and a very low-income affordability point. And, you know, what we can say is the first 28 will be ownership units.
So is this construction going to be in a staged way or phased approach upon grant availability? Or how, what is the plan of construction or the term of construction going to look like? So, you know, the homeowner, one of the homeowners mentioned that this is going to be a long haul for them. I was just wondering what that plan is going to look like?
The project will be the site work, utilities, infrastructure, open space, landscaping. Everything will be built in single phase. There will be then basically the pads and all the related improvements there, waiting for the units to come in. And the first 28 will be, at this point, they're, the county is very close to, I mean, they've actually issued the RFP for, and the bid package out for the 28 units. So what will happen is we believe that these will just come ultimately in timing-wise, and there will not be a significant delay or any delay perhaps, in terms of filling those additional 18, 19 units with the manager's unit and the 18. But at this point, all we can commit to is what we have money from the Joe Cerna grant to purchase. And and those have been specced, and and bids have been put out.
And the Joe Cerna grant, is there a time limit? Is that where the funds have to be used by? Or is, or can they be a continuance for, you know, exasperating circumstances that, you know, construction, you know, there's could be issues with construction?
I, we did not receive that grant, and it's been a while since I've I've looked at them. My understanding, the Cerna grant is roughly three years from award. We're now about six months into the three-year point. So we still have quite a bit of time available. But at this point, again, the county has moved forward with bidding and putting out the bid and specs for this. And they are planning to go ahead and have them manufactured. So the intention is to have these available when we have space available in in the very near future. So the intention is not to to allow the, anywhere near the three-year timeline to to elapse.
Okay. And as far as insurance, I know, you know, we mentioned the fire, but there's also flood insurance and homeowner insurance. Is that going to be part of that Joe Cerna grant, where the folks will be able to tap into that pot of money to purchase their own homeowner's insurance? How is that going to work out?
The Cerna grant, again, we were not the recipient of that, but the Joe Cerna grant is is for purchase of of the unit itself, setup, and delivery, and any related fees associated with that, DMV fees and that, to move the, to move the units and things of that nature. It does not include ongoing maintenance and responsibilities for that. Now, the entirety, like any other affordable project, the space rental, the mortgage cost for the units, related insurance, maintenance, utilities, all of that is integrated into an overall cost factor per, for a monthly bill. And then everything is sort of equalized out to the point. So these will, obviously, they will require insurance. They will be subject to fire homeowner's insurance. This is not located in the flood zone. It's not mandated. They certainly could acquire it, but this is not something that we would mandate, because it's not going to be in the 100-year flood zone. But that being said, all of that has to be integrated into and then made available and at a price point that is for a very low-income household. So the county and ultimately, and the management is going to assume ultimately a lot of responsibility and cost for this ongoing.
And one last question. You know, the Paharo area in Monterey County had a lot, had a lot of homes that were farm worker homes that were destroyed. Did anyone from that community, did Monterey County submit an emergency CDP for any of anything in that area? Do we know? Did staff do any research on that?
Well, I I happened to, I used to be the community development director for the city of Watsonville. So what I can tell you is, is that the coastal zone only runs to the highway in that location and that area, so they're not in the coastal zone. It's an oddity. And then up the road at the, for the slough, Elkhorn Slough runs about 13 miles inland. So it's an oddity. But but basically, the Paharo community in Watsonville, for the most part, are outside of the coastal zone and restrictions and conditions of the Coastal Act. And and what I can say, and I'm proud, is that I worked on rebuilding a 28-unit mobile home project on the Paharo, that backed up to the Paharo on the Watsonville side. And it was perfectly fine during the floods. And and we build it in 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 great part because folks were digging into the certified levy. And so we rebuilt the park and created a much better location there. But that side was was perfectly fine, and we worked through that process.
Okay, because I did happen to look at in all the emergency coastal development permits that were issued in April 2023. There are several that I've noted by the Coastal Commission. I was wondering if anybody looked into any of those to, you know, come up with ours?
We, what I can tell you is that I didn't. And frankly, the bottom line is, is that is that every community is different. And I've been here just long enough to 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 be made very aware that this community is a very different community, and and doesn't like to be compared against other communities. And the expectations and and demands are are different.
Thank you.
If it's okay, I would just like to add a little bit more response on that, which is that we've been relying on the guidance from our local office of Coastal Commission staff to support this specific situation. And we've been collaborating with them. So that's been our focus in terms of making that connection with the Coastal Commission.
And I I think it's of note, just to say, the Watsonville, Paharo, and down into Monterey are part of a different district. They're part of the central district, not the same district as what we serve under. Many of the same folks have some overlap to that point. But but every district manages and oversees a little differently, ultimately over with oversight of the Coastal Commission itself.
Thank you. Commissioner Riddick?
Thank you, Chair. One, one question. I'm a little confused as to these units requiring Measure D permits when the intent is for them to be in the county relatively quickly.
This, this property is located fully within the city limits, and it just happens that it's a county project within the city limits. And the great part about that is that we will get to count those toward our housing, our fair share portion of our housing element. So it's a, it's a bonus. But there, this is fully within the city limits.
Well, I'm sorry, but didn't Director Echus tell us that the county will acquire this five-acre parcel?
The county is in the, is is committed to acquiring the property, but the county, for example, owns the landfill within the city limits in your neighborhood. So they may own land within incorporated areas, and this is a situation in which they will end up owning this five acres within the incorporated city limits.
Okay. Thank you for that. Interesting.
Vice Chair Gossett?
I have two questions. Thank you. So when do, when would this Planning Commission expect to have a hearing on this item?
We are looking at maximum 60 days to turn around the final application. So let's just say we take the 60 days and go that, I'm not sure that we will take the full 60 days. I don't believe that we will, but let's just say we do. That will put you at February 11th, 12th. And we would then proceed into a normal process of hearings. Now, the fact that much of the work has been completed with regard to the review, design, a lot of the conditions and a lot of the study, that certainly helps us. This is still subject to CEQA. We are going to be moving forward with issuing a, an agreement for, for services for the CEQA work on this. And then that will also require the minimum 21 or 30 day, depending on the approach, for review, once that is complete and posted and out. And then there's processes there. So putting that all together, I don't envision this coming until later in spring realistically. I'd hate to put an absolute date on it, but I think May probably is as early as this will get to this commission.
Thank you. And given that the site will be all electric, will solar panels be installed on each unit?
These units, the one issue we, we've, we have gone through this process and evaluated. And at this point, the state has not necessarily made provisions for these to be able to handle solar. We continue to, to look at options and we are going to continue to pursue that where we can. But at this point, these are not going to be solar, but we have reserved an area within the five acres that could be utilized for solar. But it's probably going to be more farmed out and then sold back through and wheeled back through PCE, for example, rather than a direct link back to the units themselves.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Please, Commissioner Corn.
Through the chair. Sorry. I just, I wondered, these 19 families, when you're talking about sort of establishing an emergency CDP, where are they now? And, and sort of what is the, can you explain? I understand there might be more than 19 families because of what the, what's happening with the county, but where is everybody and why is it sort of so immediate now? Thank you.
So the city, the county, and countless others cobbled together a, a number of property owners and begged, begged many of them to take in these folks at the height of all these things. And remember, the initial point where these folks were housed in, in hotels, in a hotel particularly. And we knew we needed to, to get family housing for them. So they have been housed in various locations, some single family homes, depending on the size, some apartments, some, but all in legitimate places. The county has funded that work with, again, the assistance and support of many of the non-government folks and the city. The county has given notice that they were, they will not continue to fund this past April. And so the city, I'll say, is, is working on two different fronts. One is to get this project built as quickly as possible to house these folks and to give them hope and a place. And they're excited about the potential for that as well as others. But we are also out scouring the nonprofit and the philanthropic world to find funding to support trying to rehouse these folks in temporary housing once again for the duration that it will take for this construction to be done. So we are in a new emergency and a new emerging emergency when it comes to the fact that at this point, we need almost a million dollars to house these families and after April until we have for the roughly eight months or, or so that we're probably looking at between that and move ends. And at this point, we do not have commitment of funding for that and we're working towards that. So we have a new emerging, emergency with, as it relates to these households.
And when the county decides to declare that there's unsafe housing conditions for a variety of new families, the county is not taking responsibility for finding housing for them? They're just saying that it's the, it's, it's the city's problem?
I, I don't.
Is that an understanding?
I, I don't agree with that, that comment particularly or the question. The county is committing for this project alone, millions, millions of dollars. This is roughly a $15 million project, 5 million or so that, a little bit over 5 million is Joe Serna grant. So I don't believe that characterizing the county leaving us in a lurch or leaving these folks in a lurch is, is, is a fair statement. Clearly, there has been issues for a long period of time. And again, going back to my time in Watsonville and the Paharo and all of those issues, this is nothing new. And I also live in the Salinas Valley area as well. So farm worker housing is a challenge, is a problem for, for, for the state. It's a statewide critical issue. I think the city and the county are working closely. And I think there are a number of projects that, that are on the horizon perhaps that will also help and address this issue. So I.
So I am not expressing an opinion because I'm actually not allowed to express an opinion. But I am asking a clarifying question about where the, the new, not, not the 19 families, but the new bunch of families that we are not, it's not clear how many families it would be who are now going to be unhoused, displaced. So that, I'm asking if that is the city's responsibility or if the county is talking about doing something in the meantime? Not this project. I understand the county is participating in this project, but if the project takes longer, if the rains come, what happens to all these people? And, and are we paying for it? That's the question.
So I'm going to redirect to Matt Chittister, who has come to the dais, the city manager.
Thank you. And I'm taking this just because I'm attending the weekly meetings we're having with the county executive's office to talk about the 19 families as well as other families that come up through the inspection process. As the county is methodically going through and inspecting the other farm properties to inspect the housing conditions, they're discovering a variety of issues. Their focus is to work with the property owners to resolve issues on site to keep those families housed. Ultimately, there are going to be families displaced. My understanding is the county is working with those families through other means to bridge them towards this type of housing as well. I think the biggest challenge we're facing is the lack of affordable housing for these families. So the families that John has referenced, and I think others that get displaced, ultimately are ending up in market rate housing. And so the cost is significantly higher to keep these folks housed in that temporary market rate housing for long periods of time.
Thank you. And if, and so if this project is delayed, what's, I mean, is there a plan? What's the?
You know, that's the concern. As John said, we're facing our second emergency with these 19 families in a year's time. We're, we're confident and working with some great partners and working with some creative partners to find that funding. But if this project is delayed further in a year's time, we're going to be looking for another million dollars to keep these families housed because there is not affordable housing available to house them. So it's, it'll just be an ongoing emergency until more housing is developed or something else changes in, in the, in the area that could somehow accommodate these families long term.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Commissioner Corn. Commissioner, join us.
Clarifying, clarifying question based on what John mentioned earlier. Am I to understand that the county is ending its, what they are calling the non-congregate housing, meaning they ended the hotel, the hotels that were there and the 19 families were placed in individual units, whether it's apartments or shared housing with other homeowners? But that funding still is in place, right?
They have, basically they allocated an amount of money, I believe it was 750,000 or a million dollars in like March of last, of 2023. And that covered, the other concern is because of the, the situation that these families are in, they can't just go into market rate housing and someone pays the bill. There's, a bode housing has been contracted by the county to take a master lease on all of these properties and provide property management for all of these properties as well. A lot of these units, these are families that are just, they've got an ADU, they've got, you know, an apartment or a duplex that was vacant and they're just wanted to help. And so this pool of funding that the county put together for this purpose is going to be exhausted, as well as the leases will come to an end in March and April of, of 2024. The county's focus has shifted to the long term. As, as John said, they're the lead agency, they're investing tens of millions of dollars into this work. And so the burden of working with these families is shifted to the city and the nonprofits, obviously working closely with the county. But their funding pool is running out. And so as they continue to focus on the long-term housing, we're taking a lead role, working with the nonprofits because of, you know, these are families here on the coast, to try to keep that structure in place until they can move into the, the affordable housing.
Okay. So the emergency that John speaks of is the fact that the county's pool of money for these non-congregate housing, for these 19 families is going to run out in April or so, right? And there's no new pool of money for them to tap into. So there's no grants that they're applying for, there's no other emergency type grants that they can get. So they're looking to the city to help support, find a, a pool of money, whether it's nonprofits or something else, to help with, with that. And that's what the emergency is.
That's the emergency the city's dealing with right now is pursuing that funding. That's correct.
Okay. So the funding is the pursuing that, that is the emergency. The emergency for these CDPs is a separate level of emergency. So those are two separate things that cannot be put together, correct? So we're not considering the next year's issue, which is the funding issue versus the lack of housing issue for these folks? Is that it?
The, the funding issue for the, that bridge between when this pool of funding that the county allocated runs out and when we hope they can move into Stone Pine Cove is a separate emergency from what we're talking about in the emergency permit. I think John articulated as an emergency that we're dealing with and will continue to deal with until we have more affordable housing. So.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that in my head.
Through the chair, if I, if I could just say this.
Go ahead.
This is a continuation though of the, of the, of the emergency that is discussed in the CDP. The CDP is designed to provide permanent affordable housing for these families. So the fact that they were once faced with homelessness and placed in, in a hotel was one piece of this equation. They were subsequently with funding provided by the county and through assistance were provided housing in a, in a hodgepodge of, of places. And we are now faced with a similar situation as we were at the time of the shooting, which is they are now facing homelessness once again. And we are working to find a way to make sure that that doesn't occur. The ultimate goal of all of this is to provide permanent fixed housing affordable to their level of income, and that is this project. So it all links back to this emergency CDP for this project.
Thanks for that clarification. And one other thing, does the county do, do safety checks on these houses to make sure that they're in proper working condition? There's good water, good, you know?
You're talking about the interim housing that's in right now?
Yes, the interim housing.
Yeah, that is part of the purpose of contracting with the bode, is a bode provides, I think it's weekly inspections of the properties. And there are case managers from mostly cultural and language specific nonprofits because we have a variety of Mandarin speaking and Spanish speaking households that also meet with these families on a regular basis. So they're getting, much like our unhoused population, they're getting wraparound services. They're not just being left in these homes, although these are families that have been living on the coast, their kids go to school here. You know, they're, they're functional families within the community. But I, I, part of the, the need for the landlords and for the families is that very intensive support. And, and that's part of the reason there will be onsite management and services brought to Stone Pine Cove when it's completed.
Thank you, Matt. I heard that as part of the project, we are addressing pedestrian safety within Stone Cove as a project. I didn't hear that we're addressing pedestrian safety outside of it. I, I heard we're doing a traffic study. I also didn't hear anything in the staff report or the presentation about bike safety. And so I know there was a lot of feedback on that. Can I, is it reasonable to expect that in our final project, those items will be addressed?
If I, if I could, as a clarifying question response, I believe that we, in the conditions, do respond to many of the questions that were asked. I will say that the neighbors, in a perfect world, would like to have much wider sidewalks there because they believe that the current sidewalks are narrower than they would like and they don't feel as safe with, with that. And the bottom line is we have evaluated and they meet the requirements for width even today under normal standards in other projects. And that is an incredibly expensive proposition and, and would be maybe part of a future reconstruction project for Public Works to take on down the road if, if that's the desire. It should not and will not be recommended to be included in this project because the sidewalks are adequate. What we will suggest is that the, that, that both Cypress Cove and we will work with the adjoining property owners to make sure that they clear the landscaping and some of the limbs and the bushes and things with that, because that is creating some pinching areas. And we're committed to working through, through that process. So we, you know, we, you know, I've been out there, I think many of us have walked out there and been there. So we, we see that as a legitimate problem and concern.
There's nothing to stop you from doing that now.
Nothing will stop us and we will do that. Now, the, the post office is a pleasure always to work with. I don't care what jurisdiction you're in or the federal government and they're never approachable.
I've done it for 20 years.
There you go. And, but beyond that point, the, I think the questions and concerns around pedestrian safety and bike safety to that extent were driven by concerns about speed, which the traffic study concluded was not really an issue. But we are nevertheless going to address traffic speed and do the traffic calming, including the narrowing of the lanes with striping, putting the speed feedback signs in there, improving crosswalks and putting the share-o markings for the bicycles ultimately there. So that is already part of the project that is moving forward. Now, the question, you know, comes around is the vehicles and what types of trucks. There are on, you know, on occasion, we have large trucks that do deliver things. Obviously, the, the trash trucks come to their, to Cypress Cove as well as to the city and to every other property around there. And those are just a reality of things. So I think when we look at the, we can talk in greater detail about that when the follow-up CDP comes in, but I just wanted to, to be clear and, and, and say that, and, and I will say this without speaking to the specifics of, of the current situation that's been mentioned about the overnight issues. But the construction on this site is limited, it, it is limited to 6:00 PM and is limited to Monday through Saturday till 6:00 PM, 8 to 6:00 basically for construction. And so we feel very strongly that those need to be by to by. We've made it clear with, with the county. And when they bid, those will be clearly in there. And I think that will be addressed in this. And so I think there are, there's a lot in there to, to, to take care of a lot of the concerns and issues out there and what isn't and what hasn't been, we will address through either compliance and responding to concerns, questions and everything. address through either compliance and responding to concerns, questions and everything, and/or we will respond within additional conditions that are attached to the follow-up CDP. So I think between all of that, I think for the most part, we can get there.
So in approximately 180 days, we should expect to see a project before us, roughly. That's not a commitment from the city. And we are going to get a full coastal development permit that'll come to us for review. As new development in the city of Half Moon Bay, will this be, will this need to conform with the residential design guidelines? And will it involve architectural review?
This project will be subject to the standards for mobile home, manufactured home development, not necessarily the design guidelines intended really for stick-built construction. These units are already, at least the first 28 are going to be spec'd, bid, and under construction. So I will tell you, the answer is that these first 28 units in particular are not going to be subject to architecture advisory process.
I see. But the project as a whole will be, correct?
We can certainly route the project as a whole to the act, but as part of the emergency permit, it was not and will not obviously go to the architecture advisory committee. But with the follow-up CDP, we'll be happy to schedule it forth, their review.
Okay. I have no other clarifying questions, and I don't see any other questions from my fellow commissioners. I'd like to get a motion to acknowledge that we've received this report.
I just wanted to say one thing. I just received an email from a resident at Cypress Cove, and I just wanted to read this into the record for you. She wanted you to know, if that's okay.
I'm going to open the public comment.
Thanks. She just wanted to reiterate from Commissioner Gorn earlier, saying that the Cypress Cove homeowners are watching this meeting tonight and are still in interest in their homes. They wanted you to know that, even if they're not attending in person. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close public comment. And I'm going to ask for a motion to acknowledge that we've received the report on this item.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Could I ask a point of order first?
Yes.
Are we required to do two separate motions on these two emergency coastal development permits?
I believe the second one is actually going to come back again after it's issued. So I think it's fine if you want to acknowledge that you received the report on the granted and pending, that's fine. But you'll get the one on the county's permit later as well.
Thanks.
Thank you for your clarifying questions, Steve. So I'd like to get a motion, I'll just step back. I'd like to get a revised motion to make sure we've received the report on both the pending and the current emergency CDP.
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Close this item. Everybody good, or do we need to take a break?
Wouldn't mind a two-minute break, quick ones.
Can we adjourn till 8:45? So Maz, do you want to walk us through item 1B?
Happy to. Good evening, commissioners, chair, and the public. Maz Mozregina, Public Works Director and City Engineer for Half Moon Bay. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to present this informational item on the Highway 1 Safety and Operational Improvements Project on the north side of our city limits. I also have Ray Rizavi in the audience, our project manager on this one, as well as our landscape architect, Tom Conroy, and Seth Dahlman with our SWCA, our biological firm, is also on Zoom for this item. So just a little bit of an overview, there's the two main components. I wanted to give everybody a project update and share a few renderings of the project. And then with respect to the item for the commission report, is the design development report, that was a condition of our coastal development permit back in 2018, which was to come back with response to these specific items that are listed here. So to start, just for folks that may not be familiar with the project, this is the location of our Highway 1 North project. It starts at the north end of Main Street and Highway 1, near the high school, and goes up north to Spin Drift Way, all along Highway 1. And the project has components on the, on both east and west side, as well as within the highway corridor itself. The improvements, we've split them up a little bit. As far as the operational and vehicular improvements, we have the signalized intersection, the new signalized intersection proposed at Terrace Avenue and Highway 1. And it also ties, and across from it, it's also ties into the frontage road on the west side of Highway 1. We are also incorporating protected turn lanes. There's an extension of the merge lanes that are currently on Highway 1, extension of the acceleration lanes, and synchronization of the signals to the south of this project. The other components for non-motorized users, there's quite a bit of pad and bike improvements, including a new pedestrian bicycle path, a class 1 facility on the east side of Highway 1 for the duration of this project. We're going to, we're looking at improving safety on the west side, on the west trail, with some modifications to that, those alignments. There will also be signalized pedestrian crossings at the terrace intersection for bikes and pedestrians with push buttons, as well as refuge areas in the median islands for individuals that may need a little bit more time to make their crossing, as well as improved access to the existing bus stops along the corridor. On the project status itself, we've made some headway. I have my binder from the Planning Commission adoption of the initial study mitigating negative declaration. And it's a little scary, it was five years ago to the date, December 12th, 2018.
I still have nightmares from that.
So we have, we obviously completed the sequin, the coastal development permit. At the time, we were working on the Caltrans process, so that Caltrans peer review has been completed. We've refined the plans and specifications to the 100% level, which is basically close, ready to go out to bid. And one of the other pieces is the riparian mitigation plan, which we'll discuss a little bit more in the update. And then in progress, we actually did complete a number of utility relocations. So the gas line of PG&E has been relocated, that was last year, as well as some of the water facilities and fire hydrants with Coastside County Water District. The remaining, there are some utility pole relocations dealing with PG&E and AT&amp;T on the east side of Highway 1 that is ongoing currently. And then we are looking at our final regulatory agency permits with the Water Board, as well as the final Caltrans encouragement permit, which is contingent upon the utility relocation and the regulatory agency permits. So just wanted to share a little bit of the renderings before I have Tom come up and talk a little bit about the landscape plan. So this is the view of, the top right is the existing as you're coming out of Terrace to Highway 1. And in the foreground, you see the rendering that's imposed, the new signalized intersection, as well as the crossings. I've combined these two. So on the left side of the screen, on the top is the existing for frontage, if you're looking south. Right around, right at Terrace is the cross street just in the middle ground of that photo. And then on the bottom left, you see the rendering of what that intersection looks like with the frontage road tie-in to the, to this new signalized intersection, as well as some of the improvements for the trail on the east side, that is, on the west side, that's very visible. On the right side of the screen at the top, it's the view looking north from Main Street, basically right around the Chevron Station. And then on the bottom screen is the rendering with the improvements. Obviously, in this location, there's a signalized intersection, there'll be some minor modifications to that. But you can see in the middle of the picture, that refuge space for pedestrians, the medians basically separated out from the rest of it, and the crosswalk goes through that location. And that's what we call that refuge space that provides a little bit of extra protection. And generally, there's an additional push button, if somebody gets stuck out there, they can press that and wait for the next cycle. With this, I'll have Tom come up and speak a little bit about the landscaping.
Things gotten fancy around here. Good evening, everybody. The landscape plan, we're really fortunate to have the opportunity to work on this plan. It's in many ways an extension of some of the work that's been done on the other landscaped medians throughout the city, a lot of similar plant material. In this, the medians heading north from Main Street, we have a really intense focus on low and very low water use plants because of the lack of irrigation out on those medians. And so while the, we still anticipate the medians themselves to be lush, the plant palette is slightly refined to accommodate the water use and the lower maintenance requirements of this area. Beyond that, it will still have some of the very similar characteristics that the other medians have, the tan decomposed granite mulch. But other than that, I'm here for your questions, if you have any. Thanks.
Hey, Tom, welcome back. Is it going to be a raised curb for the entirety of the median?
My understanding is that's the case. Just to clarify, we, as the landscape architect, just did the planting within and not the civil engineering. But I believe there's a curb everywhere.
Thanks.
Yeah, and I'll clarify, that is the case. There are locations where we have cutouts for stormwater retention purposes. A lot of, some of these areas are, especially on the sides of the highways, those are created to be by our retention. So there'll be cutouts for the stormwater to get in. But other than that, yes, it'll be vertical curbs. And wanted to share a little bit, this is our tentative project schedule. Currently, we're working to finalize those utility relocations with PG&E in March of next year. And around the same time, we have, we should be able to get our regulatory permits for the project. And then again, once those two are finished, we can request the final approval from Caltrans, which will give us the encouragement permit itself. And then with that, we'll go out to advertisement. So looking at starting construction in the summer of next year. And we have a 24-month lead time on this project. That's a little bit on the higher end of the estimate, but that is, there is a potential to go to 24 months, but that is with, you know, that's weather dependent and all other things foreseen. I don't expect it to last two years, but it is possible. Now, if there's any questions, we can always take it at the end, or if you guys want to talk about any of those things beforehand?
I think we can hold off clarifying questions till the end.
All right. So the next piece of this is a little bit more detail on the design development report. These are the five items that were requested to come back, see the Planning Commission as part of the condition of approval for the project in 2018. And I'll go through these five as listed. So as far as the location, the staging area, for the most part, we anticipate the contractor to be staging within the Caltrans right-of-way. For highway construction, it's very, it's very norm, it's normal for it to be phased, because none of these projects are going to close vehicular traffic for long, for anything other than a very short period of time. So all of these facilities are to remain functional, depending on the certain phase. There may be some shifting and some temporary improvements. So when they're doing some of the work on the bike trail, in addition to the frontage road, for example, there would be, you know, there would be a separate facility and markings for folks that are typically using that area. So those are, those are some of the considerations. And then as they phase out, when they start working in the median, and some of the phases on the outer areas become construction zones, then they kind of swap those. When I get to the last item, there, we have some of the plans for the construction phasing, and we can go into a little bit more detail on what those phasing components look like. But for the most part, that's what we're anticipating. There is a potential that the contractor requests for additional laydown in staging area. That is something that on occasion, it has come up. But anything outside of the project area, due to the conditions of the project, would have to be evaluated. So if that's something that the contractor requests, we would be coming back for additional discussion and potential approval of anything like that. So we, as a staff, we're not encouraging that, because obviously there's a timeline component that we want to continue making. So that's not something that we're encouraging. Based on the area and the width of the right-of-way, we feel, you know, our understanding is that it's adequate for the type of work that we're proposing the contractor to complete. We also, the next item was the location of the bus stops, and this was more specific to the spin drift side. And what I can say is that, so this particular one, that came out of the conversation during that CDP approval, was looking at the one north of Spin Drift. So for this project, it's actually outside of our project scope. So it won't be impacted as far as any construction activities or removals. What I will say is that in early part of the project phase, we did reach out to SAM Trans and discussed with them any potential needs, upgrades, amenities, things of that nature. At the time, they did not have a lot to say, other than making sure we have access and providing ADA access in some of the areas that we have existing stops. Since then, they have been looking at having, they've been having a lot more outreach and conversations with communities around the county. We've been a part of those conversations in that working group, talking about bus stops, shelters, amenities, shared maintenance. And so those conversations are ongoing, and we can certainly have those conversations in the future. By the time of the development of this project, these project plans, they had no additional requests or needs. But again, as those change, we can, we will work with our partners on those. But for the purpose of this item, that bus stop will be unimpacted and will be remained through the duration of the project. The next item is our riparian mitigation. And if we can have Seth Dahlman over to speak a little bit about that. I will mention that as part of the Corporation Yard Coastal Development Permit, this mitigation plan was approved as part of that. So there will be no additional need for this commission to approve that. And that's, the nice piece was that we had that project coming around the time that this plan was completed, and so that was incorporated into that. Seth, if you can give us a little bit of overview.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Maz. Hopefully y'all can hear me okay there. And yeah, so basically, this site was chosen in combination with the project that Maz alluded to, the Pacific Bike Way project, providing some of the riparian mitigation for both projects. And, you know, for the permanent willow impacts that are part of the Highway 1 North project, along the east side of the highway there, providing a four-to-one mitigation for those willow impacts. We worked, SWCA worked in concert with the city to identify this site along the riparian corridor of Pillar Cetus Creek, within the Corporation Yard. And you can see on the two, on the two images here, too, on the, on the right side, in the kind of the green polygons there that are shown are riparian enhancement areas where there are planned willow plantings. The yellow zone there is a riparian transition zone. And then on top of that, kind of that red polygon, is upland transition mitigation as well, too. And really, the intent is to provide a kind of a soft transition to ultimately, you know, those, what was described- to ultimately, you know, those, uh, what was described earlier on the call, uh, as far as some of the residential development, um, that'll occur at the Corporation Yard. And also filling in a lot of the areas, um, where, uh, riparian, uh, vegetation can take hold. Previously, you can kind of see in the red pile, polygon there, there were, um, uh, some, some agricultural usages there, too. And so the intent, especially with that upland zone, is to, um, provide some, some native plantings there. Um, and then also, what we're seeing in some of the areas that we're looking at the riparian enhancement is some non-natives, uh, things like, uh, French broom, um, uh, pampas grass and, and others there, too. And getting some, some of the natives to take hold there as part of the project. So really just seeing this as a, as a benefit for the, uh, the, the area within the Corporation Yard and the residential development that's going to be happening there, um, as well as doubling the, the mitigation requirement for the project.
Thank you. Maz?
Thank you, Seth. All right. The next item is the, uh, the traffic, uh, management plan for construction. So the, we have, uh, kind of, we, we, just to be a little bit simpler, we, we looked at, um, one segment. There is a second, second page to this for each stage, but just to be a little bit cleaner, um, we, we have half of it. If you want to, we can go through it in more detail if there's any questions. I'm happy to do that. Uh, but you can see here, kind of the way that the, the management is set up, um, you have some of the work on the shoulders proposed as part of Stage One, and some of the work in the median areas, and it kind of transitions. And so the whole point of this is to continue, to continue, have continuous, um, uh, operation of this facility during construction. So then you go to kind of Stage Two in the same area, you can see where it kind of flips. And now, instead of being on the, on the western side of the, of the right-of-way, they're, they're moving over to the eastern side. And then, you know, the, these, uh, these hatched areas are kind of where they're working, um, as part of, um, the, uh, the Stage Two. Then you go look at Stage Three, for example. Now they've got those areas kind of buttoned up, and now they're, now they, now the focus switches over to Terrace and Frontage Road intersection, and some of the improvements there. And then in Stage Four here, you can kind of see where it swaps back again. Each one has its own, um, uh, type of work. So you, obviously, you get a lot of the underground work in kind of the first couple of stages. And then as you get to Stage Three, Four, and Five, it's more of the surface work and signalization. Um, and the whole, the whole, uh, require, this is actually a requirement from Caltrans to do, um, because, for this, for the same reason. They want to make, ensure that operation of the facility continues, even though there will be temporary impacts during construction. It's not going to be closed, um, for any real period of time. Um, and then here is the Stage Five, where it's more of the finishing work and some of the other pieces. This is when you're starting to do some of the pedestrian handrails, some of the, the, those types of, you know, the guardrails, those types of final improvements, landscaping, things of that nature. And then the, the last item, um, that was, that was requested for a report back on is the, uh, options for pedestrian crossing at, uh, Spindrift. We did hear from a number of community members, um, at the time, as well as, um, others, um, asking for, for more information on these items. At this time, the project does not incorporate a crossing at Spindrift and Highway One. However, um, we are continuing to look at that, um, as part of different projects. There is a project here that's highlighted in kind of this dash yellow. That's what we call the East Side Trail, Parallel Trail Segment Two. That portion is the continuation of this project, and it, and it crosses Frenchman's Creek and connects to the existing, um, East Side Trail that runs from, uh, Rousseau-Français to, um, uh, Rocket Farms. And so this segment is something that we actually have, uh, funding for to start designing environmental review. We have $2 million grant that we received, um, from the, uh, from, uh, by, from Jackie Spears' office as part of a call for, uh, infrastructure funds. So that project, we're, we're working on encumbering those funds and starting that process, I'm happy to, to report out on. And, um, that'll be one of, that'll be a project where we will look at, um, the intersection of Spindrift and Highway One, um, as well as Frenchman's Creek Road and the Rousseau-Français intersection. That project will be studied in more detail. At the same time, um, Caltrans has submitted an application for a, uh, project, the, uh, what they call the SHOP project. It's, it's actually, they, they, they're calling it a multi-asset project. It's basically a, uh, pavement revitalization and bike and pedestrian improvement project. That project's been submitted within the last 30 days, I want to say, to the city, and we're currently under, uh, going through the review process. And, um, certainly, some of the comments that, that we have is for Caltrans to consider these improvements as part of that project. So hopefully, you know, if, hopefully that's something that they will be able to incorporate as part of their plans. If not, the city still has another project down the line that we can look at that again and consider. And obviously, having, not having that connection, um, to the Rousseau-Français East Side Trail is, is, is a challenge. It'll be a bottleneck, um, for us until we get that built. So the good thing is that we have that seed money to start designing environmental, and we can start looking at, um, other grant funding opportunities to get that, that last piece done. It's not part of my presentation, but that Segment Four project that was part of the mitigation, um, that's on the further north end, that ties from the north side of Rocket Farms to the trail, um, the East Side Trail that the county just completed building. That project is, uh, is, um, actually, you know, far along in the design, uh, process. There, we're waiting for final approvals from Caltrans, and, uh, we have a regulatory permit on that one as well. That one, we're hoping to start construction around the same time as this one, if not a little bit sooner. And that project is more off the side, on the shoulder, there won't be as much, uh, traffic operation impacts, but, um, there will be that completion of that trail. So with these two last four segments from Main Street on the north side to Elgin County Elementary, we should have an East Side Trail that is continuous. So that's, um, that'll be nice to finally see that vision come to fruition.
Woo woo.
Um, and with that, that is the end of my presentation. We're, um, here and happy to, uh, respond to any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Rudek, do you have any clarifying questions?
No, thank you. Um, Maz, you mentioned the synchronization of traffic signals. Which, which signals exactly?
Those, um, signals that are being synchronized with this project are on the south side of Terrace. So it's Terrace is, uh, and right now, 92 and Highway One, as well as Highway One and North Main Street are signalized, um, with, uh, Main and 92. So this will be one other leg that's synchronized with that. It's not being proposed to be synchronized with Frenchman's Creek Road at this, at this time. That, that intersection is more on a demand basis, um, for crossing movements, uh, for pedestrians as well as vehicular traffic. Not to say that it can't be incorporated in the future, but it's not part of our existing scope for this project.
Good deal. Thank you.
Vice Chair Gossett?
Thank you. I wanted to know, uh, what would be done to ensure that the project doesn't exceed 24 months, um, especially since staging could be unsightly on Highway One, and we know there have been supply chain issues in the past with other major roadway projects. And then I have another, I have a list. Do you want me to go through the list, or would you rather? Okay. And then, uh, I noticed the condition of approval required baseline data for stormwater management to be collected, um, before the project, and also that baseline data for traffic, um, volume and speed in frontage road be collected before the project. I just wanted to know how that was coming along. And then are there other, uh, enhancement measures for nighttime safety being considered for a project like this? And do you know of other projects in the general area, excuse me, where, um, enhancement of safety at nighttime is considered? And, um, I think that's about it for right now. Thank you.
Do you want to go through all of these, or you want to answer all of her questions at one time, Maz?
Um, I can do it however.
Why don't you, you, go ahead. That's fine.
Okay. I'll go through the four I heard, and if I miss anything, let me know. So as far as the construction duration, um, this project will have liquidated damages as part of the schedule. So we want to make sure, um, you know, that's part of the, the number of days that we select is based on, um, the project, uh, duration, the logic, the sequencing. And so with the design engineer and, uh, considering, with considering all those factors, um, we come up with that duration of the project. And, um, so with that, 24 months, that also, that doesn't just include the construction, that's also landscaping and some of the off-site work and, uh, signalization improvements where you may not even have, uh, traffic impacts outside of, um, that area. So, um, that's, that's the way we control that. We have those liquidated damages for that reason, and if the, you know, the contractor goes over, it's an incentive for them to make sure that they finish on time. The stormwater data, we have collected some stormwater data, um, specific to that, uh, the culvert that feeds into Kehoe. It's been very challenging, um, from the perspective of, because of the, the situation and the condition of that. It has a lot of high flows during certain peak times, but there's not a consistent amount of flow. So we've had, we actually have a, uh, portable, open-ditch, um, uh, flow gauge that we've, uh, put out there, and there's some data that was collected. It just, um, it was really hard to continue collecting the, when we had the larger storms, the, um, and some of the larger debris would actually unhinge it, um, and move the sensor. And so there was a lot of back and forth. We, we feel that we have some data, um, that, that could be supportive and useful for us. But also from the, separate from this project, we have the more robust watershed management approach that we're looking at. So when we get to the Kehoe ditch, uh, and in Pillar Cetus Creek area, that's one of the ones that we'll take a closer look at. We'll have some data that's available to us, um, but there'll be more, um, more, uh, review and analysis of that, of, of those areas as part of that. For the traffic data, um, we, um, have not done that yet. We have, there's a couple of different sources. We do have, um, access to, uh, software that does, um, extrapolation of, of traffic volumes. And so, um, that's something that we can utilize. It's one of the programs that we, the county, countywide, they use something called Streetlight Data. It's a third-party company. They, they basically, um, obtain, um, anonymous cell phone records, and it just tracks trips of people going to and from their home business, different types of trips. And, um, it's, they, I see, they have about 10% of the overall traffic, and then they use that to kind of, they extrapolate the information, they kind of multiply it out. And so that's some baseline data we have, but we actually were considering having traffic counters out there on the frontage road as part of, uh, as part of one of the activities before we start construction. So there's still, we still have an opportunity to do that. And then as far as the nighttime, um, the nighttime, uh, safety improvements, you know, that's, it's, um, it's a little bit of, uh, there, there's two, and there's two sides to this, because there's also the, the dark skies policy that we have, and we want to maybe be very sensitive about. And so for projects like this, you will see areas where we have intersections, you will have lighting in those intersections. And so that's the main area where we want to make sure that there's adequate lighting, um, for, for, uh, for nighttime is if anybody's crossing the street. So those are the areas where we really focus the majority of that. Outside of those, that intersection, we, we're not proposing to do, um, any real lighting to be, uh, to be subject to that, that night sky policy, the dark sky policy. Was there anything else on your list?
That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon?
Um, just a couple of small things. It's, uh, first of all, great news about the East Side Trail Segment Two, um, and getting funding for that. I assume that, is that all the funding we'll need for that?
No, it's, it's enough to start, it's enough to do the designing environmental.
Yeah, okay.
And if there may be, there should be a little bit left for construction, but the construction funding is still going to be, uh, something we'll be going out to grants for.
Okay. It's off the point, anyway. So, uh, you also said, again, off the point, but you said that it's the same timeline. The Section Two, and I guess Section Three, um, is roughly on the same timeline, but what timeline is that?
The, the Segment Four is, um, yeah, that's the one that's the furthest north in the city limits. That one, we are looking at, uh, I'm actually anticipating to, uh, go out to bid in the springtime, so we should, uh, I'm hopeful that we actually break ground with that first, and are pretty far along before this project, uh, breaks ground.
So you're thinking 2024?
Yeah, spring of next year. No, we're, we're very close on that Segment Four.
Okay, great. Um, so, back on the subject, I know, uh, traffic, um, sort of mitigation is the, is the most important part of this project. But that staging area does go right through the bike path. So what's, what's the plan for redirecting that bike track?
So, um, I can, let me go back to that slide. So that is... Oops, I went too far. Where'd it go? There it is. So this, I think this location, this staging area that we have here is an example of one of the locations that could happen. So again, this is going to be part of the phasing of the project, so there are going to be times where they're working there where they won't be able to actually stage. So, um, I think this is a good example of some of the areas that, that could happen. I see Ray, Ray's up at the podium. Ray, do you want to talk a little bit about that, too?
Yes. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, we are planning to use the, uh, the frontage road, uh, as part of rerouting the bicycle pedestrians. And we've been talking with the, um, consultant, design consultants, and, uh, we are trying to modify the, um, the, the five stages of construction to see exactly how we're going to put barriers so we have a safe route for pedestrian bicycles on the west side. On the east side, currently, we do not have a pedestrian bicycle path. Bicycle pedestrians currently are using, uh, the shoulder area on the east side. So that's a little more complicated. Uh, we will not have a shoulder area. We got, we're going to have a barrier, the K rails, that separate the, uh, the vehicles, uh, from the construction area. So we're not going to be able to accommodate any pedestrian bicycles on the east side until the trail is done. But the west side path will remain open, and it will be routing them through the frontage road. There's a wide paved area for the frontage road that we'll be able to utilize for safe access, north-south direction, all through the project.
And have you considered, um, maybe closing that, um, that little piece of the frontage road to, uh, car traffic?
Uh, we, we are looking at different possibilities. Um, at, at the first glance, we can accommodate car traffic there on a very narrow lane, ten-foot lane, uh, for north and south travel, as well as have a path for the pedestrian bicycles. Uh, but we're looking at it now to see exactly how we're going to make that alignment work during the five stages of construction. And still have area for staging, right, in the middle section. Because in the middle section, we are realigning the bike and path path, the class one path. So we need to have access for construction in that area. So we need to move the bike and path path into the frontage road.
Right. I'm just saying, the frontage road, it's not that safe to have bikes and pedestrians and the car traffic, and it's a very small piece of frontage road to close to, to...
Correct.
Car traffic, and the construction traffic could still...
Correct.
Could still use it.
There are some facilities on frontage roads, so we have to make sure we have access to the church and other facilities as on the frontage road. Well, we may look at the one-way for access, uh, as well as, uh, we, we definitely would have a K-rail between the vehicles and the pedestrian bicycles. We're going to make it safe for them.
Thank you.
One of the other alternatives is also, you know, close to, through traffic, so only local trips. So somebody going to the Lutheran church...
Yeah, that's what I meant.
To the, yeah. That's an option as well.
Let me just restate what I heard. You're going to put concrete jersey barriers potentially up on the road in front of the Lutheran church, um, and the veterinarian's office and Farmer John's area for as long as two years?
The two-years construction that we propose is not actual construction continuously. Once you award the contract, it's going to take about a month to execute the agreement. After that, the contractor has to, has to make some middles for all the different facilities. That, and that has to go through Caltrans for processing.
Um, so I'm trying to create clarification on how long, what's a reasonable timeframe for us to expect that concrete jersey barriers are going to be up there? Is it three months? Is it six months? Is it 24 months? I know you can't, it's like telling you how long is a piece of string. Trying to set an expectation with the community as to how long these things are going to be there.
I, maybe I can, um, state this a little bit. So yeah, I, I mean, based on the phasing, the K-rails will be moving at certain points. And as areas are, are completed, we may be opening them up. So let's say that bike trail's completed and it's ready to be used. Um, we may, um, you know, there's, there's a high likelihood that we'll open that facility and start using it and be able to eliminate some of these K-rails. I would say you can expect it for potentially 18 months, but it may not be all in the same location. So it'll, it should be, it'll be moving around.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I do have some questions. The time of year that the construction's going to take place, I mean, I'm assuming it's not during Pumpkin Festival, and it's not during the busy times of the year, but it's a 24-month period. So how is that going to work out as far as when the project starts and when it ends? and when it ends? I mean, obviously, there's going to be times where, you know, you don't want to have construction at all. How is that going to work out?
Yeah, I think, yeah, no, that's a good point. I think for a project like this, depending, you know, again, it's going to be something that we'll coordinate very closely with the contractor once they're selected, but some of the conditions we'll have in the specifications are these, these, these important dates, like the week, the pumpkin wayoff through the Pumpkin Fest. It doesn't make sense for the contractor to be working. It's really not going to be efficient for them as well as the city. So those are some of the areas that we'll look at. Obviously, on holiday, on, on city holidays, there's no construction work authorized. We are not proposing to have any weekend work, although that depends on the project's phasing and timing. There may be some activities that make more sense to do it on the weekends or at nighttime, so it'll be a little bit difficult. But that's going to be part of it, is just continuous oversight and making sure that when we have events coming up, depending on where they are in the phasing of the project, that things get buttoned up to a point where it can be utilized during those large fest, those times. It's not Pumpkin Fest, obviously, you get some time in, for the tree farms, they get pretty busy. Obviously, we have our summer season as well, so there, there's, yeah, there are a number of times. Dream Machines is, you know, going to, will bring a lot of traffic to the coast, and so those are the areas that we have to be really careful with, with our contractor to make sure that they're aware of those events coming up.
Right, even the county's events that they have at the harbor, and, you know, sometimes the stuff that goes on in Pacifica affects us as well, if the traffic circulation goes that way. So just a thought. The other thing I wanted to ask about, actually, two other things, is the interconnection of the signalization. I know you mentioned it's Highway One in Maine, and then what about Kelly and Highway One? And then what about taking it all the way, even going further south and then further north, to make sure that there's a timed appropriately, because there's a lot of backup that goes up the 92, or backup that goes down the, you know, down the one south, and it causes congestion, people going through Main Street downtown, so, and it just blocks everything up. And I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, the signalization in, in coordination or in consideration of the, you know, 880 Stone Pine going in, and then the 555 Kelly going in, you know, that all needs to be interconnected, I feel, to make sure that everything works well. So if you can comment on that, and I have two other questions.
Currently, we have coordinated the signal from Main Street on the north side all the way down 92 to down to the new signalized intersection at South Main Street. All those signals are connected. The choke point right now is just north of Main Street in the area of Terrace Avenue. That's the current choke point. That's the worst area currently in the city. So we're hoping that with this project, after the project is completed, and we connect the Terrace Avenue with the rest of the five signal downs, down south-
Which would be, which, which ones that would be?
Currently, the, all the signals from, from North Main Street connection with Highway One, down to 92, down to Kelly, and-
Poplar.
Poplar and South Main Street are all interconnected.
Okay, that, that's good to know, because that, that's important. The bus stops and accessibility for ADA accessible folks, wondering if there is any consideration of, or some kind of crossing at Spindrift? I know you mentioned there is, but some crossings at those bus stop locations, because, you know, having somebody in a wheelchair or doesn't have the accessibility that, you know, a person like me has, it's tough for them to go to the next signal to cross and then walk over, you know, roll over, I should say. So I was hoping that, and I'm glad Sam Trans is looking at this, and they're having more questions about it, so that would be something that I would really, you know, consider, because ADA accessibility for the folks is coming out of buses, I've seen it, and it's really rough on them for, and that's both north and south, you know, bus stops, so.
Yeah, I mean, that, you can apply that to pretty much into the entire highway corridor throughout our city limits-
Yeah.
And beyond. No, I think those are, those are great comments. That's something we can talk with Sam Trans about in more detail, as far as anything temporary or in the interim. You know, during construction, there'll be, you know, there'll be additional, you know, things out in the, in the right-of-way where, you know, drivers are, you know, paying attention, and so identifying where the bus stop is for, you know, for those, you know, for that Spindrift stop, for example, with signage, just so that vehicles are aware of those things. Those are part of the traffic mitigate, traffic control plans that we have to do. I would also, I know it's a little bit smaller on scale, but we also will continue to promote some of the micro-mobility options that we have in the city, like Ride Plus, where, you know, folks with, that are, that have needs, although the times are limited, that they can use those amenities as well. And then, yeah, this, this is off-topic, but we're actually, you know, looking at other grant funding opportunity to help Ride Plus increase their hours and their reach, because right now they're constrained a little bit to the city's limits, and their hours are generally eight to five, or eight to six, and so we're looking at actually expanding that program even separate from this project.
Right, so it's not only temporary, right? I mean, it's not only during construction, it's also after construction to make sure that there's some kind of crosswalks or some easy accessibility for people with, you know, disabilities to be able to get across the highway.
It'll be, it'll be challenging to do anything permanent in the interim basis. I think with, again, with the Caltrans multi-asset project, it's going to be a big push for us to request that that be incorporated in that existing Spindrift shelter. And again, if, if that's something that does not come to fruition through the Caltrans project, we do have the other project that's pretty close behind it, that hopefully, if it's not that, and our, the city project, we'll be able to resolve that, because that is an area where we've heard a lot of requests for crossing.
Right. And then I have one other thing with regard to landscaping, actually, so. The question I have is regarding landscaping, we currently have landscaping that we are trying to match on the, on this project. Is there consideration for native plants?
Oh, definitely, yeah, yeah. A, about 75, 80% of the plant list is, is native plants for the, for the north median.
Okay. Are they, are they native plants, like, you know, things that we see along the coastal trail, like, you know, we see Clarkias, we see monkey flowers, we see, you know, the seaside daisies, or we see things that are, you know, that speak our community, you know? So I was just wondering if that is, I mean, local, local?
Yeah, we have Sienothus and Budalua and Bacchus, there's Dechampsia, the tufted hair grass, Wildry, we've got several different varieties of grasses. Yeah, the seaside daisy are, are in there. I think that hits most of them. Oh, we do have some Frangula, the California coffeeberry, where the, where the median gets a little bit wider. And a couple other Douglas Iris as, as well in, in the plant list, so.
Great, thank you.
Definitely.
I see people turning off their microphones in unison. I, I don't suppose there's any other clarifying questions? Well, thank you for the update. We don't need to make a motion here, we just, we've received the report. One comment, go, go, go. The community would rather see this in less than 24 months, and I know you're going to do everything you can to minimize the impact, but 24 months is a long time. Thank you. I'm going to close this item, and then I think the next item we have is the Director's Report.
Thank you, and I, yep. I think that, that's where I was going to go. Did we have any comment cards?
Yeah. I don't have any, and there's no one online.
Did you have a public comment?
Do you have a comment, sir? Please step up to the dais.
Yeah.
I'll open up your public comment.
Yes, I live in the Kehoe area, and I'm questioning, while I understand the need for the traffic light at Terrace, what is the impact? What studies have you done to identify the increased problems that we already have for traffic in the Casa Del Mar area, Spindrift, or the Grandview Boulevard area? Because when you put the traffic light there, it's all going to back up, and if you look at the traffic at 8:00 in the morning, or 4:00 in the afternoon, it's tough getting onto Highway One, or tough getting off Highway One. So while you're solving one problem, you're creating other problems, or you're causing other problems to become even greater. I'm only asking that you think and treat everybody else the same way as you're treating the people in Terrace. You know, if they're getting, they need it, no question about it, but everybody else wants to feel treated the same way. That is, they also have access to Highway One, to getting onto Highway One, and to getting off Highway One. Because sometimes in the afternoon, it takes me four minutes or five minutes to get off Highway One, turning down on Kehoe. Same with Wave, because of the traffic. So something has to be done about the traffic pattern, and I disagree with the comment that the traffic lights between Terrace and the firehouse will be synchronized, because the traffic light at Kehoe, at Kelly is a disaster. We understand, people understand that at 7:30 in the morning till maybe 9:00, because of the schoolchildren, there's going to be more traffic. But the rest of the day, it doesn't have to be a long traffic light with only one car. But again, the point is to get traffic moving through, so we're not all sitting in traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I regret that we almost made you miss your public comment after the long time you've sat here, so I apologize.
No problem. I just wanted to speak my, and I'm not the only one. We feel like we're prisoners in Casa Del Mar on the weekends, or we can't go out because of all the traffic.
Could you go back to the microphone? I'd love to hear the, your comment.
My comment was, we feel we're, we're almost, we're prisoners in our own homes on the weekends because of the traffic, especially now, not the COVID, where more people from the coast, from the peninsula and East Bay have discovered, have discovered the coast, and how beautiful it is, and everything it has to offer with all the trails and stuff, and the restaurants and so forth. But it puts us at a great disadvantage in the areas that I mentioned, because we can't get out. We have to go, either go out early in the morning for shopping, if we want to do some shopping, or go somewhere, or late in, late at night. And that's not right. None of you, I don't know where you live, but I'm guessing, none of you have those same issues. So I'm only asking if we're going to treat the people in Terrace, and I agree that they, they have a problem, but are there more people in Terrace than there are in Casa Del Mar, the Kehoe, Wave Avenue area, or Spindrift? No. So I'm asking, let's do something about the traffic that we have and treat the other communities the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other folks who'd like to speak? I think everybody in the room except for John Doughty has spoken on this topic. Please, no. And I don't see anybody raising their hand online, so I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. I will make one comment, that both Commissioner Rudek and I raised our eyebrows at the idea that the poplar is synchronized with the other lights. That may be a true statement for most hours, or many of the hours of the day, but it is a surprising statement, so maybe a follow-up conversation later offline would be appropriate. Thanks.
If I may comment-
Oh, yeah, please.
Yeah, if, if it's okay, through the chair. So yeah, on the synchronization, so there is the interconnect cables. Now, whether they're functioning properly, that's a different story. So we can certainly look closer, and I think poplar specifically needs a little bit more maintenance than, than what's been happening over there, so that's something that we'll, I'll, I'll talk to Caltrans about more specifically.
I, I will say, when they installed that light on poplar, it took approximately four and a half years for Caltrans to do the 15 minutes of work to reprogram the light so that it was actually safe to cross. So it'd be great if we can get this all done at one time, as opposed to waiting four and a half years, people playing Frogger on the street because the lights are programmed the wrong way. I was one of those people. Commissioner, join us.
Thank you. If you could also check Kelly as well, because that, that, yes, because that doesn't seem it's, like, it's cycling through, and maybe they can be cycled through at different hour, you know, different times, different hours of the day, different, you know, cycles, that might be something that needs to be done.
Sure. I mean, that's something as, you know, with, regardless of this project, something that I can look into and work with Caltrans Traffic and Operation folks to get buttoned out. So I'll take a look at both of those areas, and I do also understand that both of those intersections do, I, I'd say they also need some additional infrastructure improvements as well as just the signalization timing.
We, we can solve a million problems, but just the, is it working, I guess, and is it working as, as it should be designed?
And I did want to make one comment with regards to the access, although we are calling it for, as far as the naming of it, the intersection of Highway One and Terrace, it's actually the, it also does intersect with Frontage Road on the west side, so the Casa Del Mar neighborhood will have Frontage Road access to this intersection. So for anybody that's trying to get in, or trying to make a left turn into Frontage Road, if you're coming northbound, or if you are trying to go northbound, you can access this new signalized intersection, once it's completed, through the Frontage Road, and, and be able to make those turning movements from that location.
Maz, are you saying that they're going to take Terrace and they're going to extend the Frontage Road to Farmer John's Pumpkin Farm?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
For point of clarification, doesn't that go down to Grand, the new Frontage Road? Is that where it is?
Yeah, actually, it loops all the way to Grand Avenue, so for folks from Grand, as well as, I don't know what the names keep in my brain. The other street, Bellevue.
Bellevue, Belleville.
Belleville, sorry. Belleville and Grand both will have access. Belleville, on the backside, will come into Grand and, and be able to utilize the signal on the Frontage Road, and then Grand, of course, is extended out, so they are being connected through those.
You're going to make it easier for us to get the granolas?
Yes, that's part of it.
The, the residents of Bellevue, Belleville are going to be very excited about that.
One more question, since you started talking about Belleville. I, I noticed from the 2018 meeting, they spoke of potholes, and I rode down that road today, and the potholes are still there. They call them traffic calming measures, but, I mean, is that ever going to be addressed?
Yes. Yeah, that is one of the, I mean, as part of our overall street network, that's one of the ones that we really want to get to. We haven't been able to at this point, because of the, the nature of it, it's more of a reconstruction at this point. There were some discusses, discussions in 2018 about assessment districts, and that's something that I think the, a lot of the community members were not on board with, so that does limit it a little bit, but it doesn't mean that we haven't done anything. Last year, actually, after the rains, we did get some temporary filling of those potholes with cold patch, so that's something that we are continuing to maintain with our, our local crews, our, our public works maintenance staff. And then moving forward, that is a project where we would look at reconstruction of that pavement section.
I had to get up. This is, this is one that's near and dear to my heart, if I may. One sec. Almost every one of the lots on Belleville have a deferred street improvement agreement, and that was a choice made by the builders at that time. So I just want to be clear why we were always talking about assessment district, because under those agreements, they agreed in perpetuity and with successors of interest to participate in an assessment district and build the street that probably should have been built at the time, or at least portions of the street built at the time those homes were built, so I couldn't, I couldn't let that one go. Sorry.
I learned something new today. Thank you. Okay, so we've closed public comment. We had a lively five-minute repartee here after that, and I think you helped us all, informed all of us a little bit more about the project. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. So now- Appreciate it. So now, without further ado, we'll move to the director's report.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Well, this is your last meeting of 2023. Agenda forecast, we're still cobbling together. Your first meeting in 2024 should be January 9. Staff will try to confirm with you before we break. The city actually closes City Hall, and will be closed on the 25th, 26th, 27th, through the 29th, I guess, I guess it is, that whole week. And then we do have another couple days off, and we'll be open on the 3rd. So just note that staff will get, reach out to you if we have items that need to be noticed. We have to get them queued up for our newspaper, who needs extra time, and there's quite a few things like that. So we'll, we'll let you know how that's going. Usually, at the beginning of the year, we do kind of a check-in hygiene kind of meeting with reviewing the bylaws, or talking about SEQA, things like that. I don't know if there's any desire for that this year. Feel free to pop your suggestions over to Bridget if you have an interest in any particular topic. I know our city attorney here has presented to you in the past on, on some items, and Doug Garrison is happy to come and talk about SEQA. So we have some resources for you, just on your staff, or if you'd like us to bring somebody in. We don't have anything planned right now. We have, we have just been really overwhelmed with some intense projects, so. But I didn't want to let it slip, and let you know that that's absolutely available if you'd like to have something like that. Okay, city council, just at their last meeting, they confirmed their Measure D allocations for 2024. I'd just like to bring this up, if anyone's watching, that the open period for applications will start January 3, and it will end on January 31 for the first batch. And in recent years, we've been issuing all of those outside of downtown from that first semittel period. The council, hang on. Next, next week, they will have their reorganization, and all are welcome to attend. It's usually a little bit celebratory, and there's almost always something like cake. So just know that you're more than welcome to, to come in. The meeting of, the council is not meeting on January 2. That meeting is counseled. On the 16th, we'll be bringing an appeal to council. It's tentatively scheduled. We did have an appeal of your action on 225 Valdez, and so we are preparing to bring that forward to council as timely as we can. We're also hoping to give council just a brief update on how it's going with implementing your new short-term rental ordinance. Staff has processed the first handful of applications, so we have some STR operators that are in full current compliance with the brand-new ordinance, and staff is ready and willing and able to help anyone else who wants to come in. They will do, we're going to do a communication push for those that haven't come in yet. We'll, we'll do that in January and really encourage them. But that is going well. Also, on the appeal front, on February 6, city council meeting, there is another appeal. It's actually two appeals of commission action regarding the Wave Crest Trail Phase Two project. And so both of those appeals will be heard concurrently. And it's an interesting situation. I, I really have never had a project that had two different appeals on it like this. So once that packet goes out, would encourage you all to take a look at, at how it's being handled. Feel free to give us feedback. We're doing our best to acknowledge the due process for both appellants, as well as the applicant, and looking forward to moving that forward in February. This week, on Thursday, the Architectural Advisory Committee is going to take a look at two single-family residential projects, as well as some improvements for the barn property up by Miramar. There's a new owner who's doing some proposed changes to exterior space, as well as how the property is operated. And we're trying to find time to bring 555 Kelly back for a second round of review with the Architectural Advisory Committee, and possibly with this commission. So we're, we're even brainstorming about a joint session, if, if that seems like something that might be helpful. And, give me a moment, just have a little bit more. Oh, yeah, so the other thing going on this Thursday, the Coastal Commission is meeting this week. This is their once-a-month meeting week. They are in Santa Cruz. And on Thursday, they will have a forum on housing. And I encourage you, if you can, to watch it while it's happening, or, or plug back into it later. They will have a panel with Coastal Commission staff, as well as Housing and Community Development staff, so both state agencies that we have at times struggled to harmonize their input on the, the various codes that we've worked on, like accessory dwelling unit ordinance, where we have conflicting feedback from two state agencies. I'm absolutely thrilled that they're doing this. I am also aware that HCD's, one of, one of their housing element reviewers has been meeting with Coastal Commission staff, I think, monthly, and just talking about some of these challenges that are happening in local jurisdictions. So I do intend to speak as a member of the public representing an agency to simply acknowledge our appreciation as a local jurisdiction implementing an LCP, that we would have these agencies getting, collaborating, and hopefully giving us consolidated guidance for housing matters. So, anyway, just, it's a great end-of-the-year topic, and thank you for all, all of this. That's it.
I had a couple of follow-up questions. The first one is, you know, you'd mentioned a while back whether or not we'd like to have a study session with the school district on their proposed project. I, I will say, I've certainly heard a very colorful and vibrant dialogue in the community on that project. And if there's anything we can do to help the school district facilitate a higher-quality project, I think it would be very good for the community. On a lighter note, do you know if they're planning to touch that burger? Because I really love the Farmer's Burger at the barn. They can, they can tear the whole building down, as far as I'm concerned, but please don't mess with that burger. It is so good.
It's not a land use matter that I know about in the zoning code, but well appreciated.
Very good. Are there any other planning, Commissioner, comments? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved that we adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.